Good evening. This meeting for Fairfield County Council has been called to order. Today's date is February 11th, November, I'm sorry, February 11th of 2019, 6:00 PM. First we'll have is the approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion?
It's been moved, Mr. Chair.
It's been moved and properly seconded. All in favor? It's been approved seven to zero. Next we'll have the invocation. The Vice Chair Goines.
Good evening. That is Fray. Lord God, we just thank you for this time coming together once again. Thank you for how you kept us and we ask that you guide and direct us during the county's business, Lord God, that everything that we do will be decent and in order and beneficial to all in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Ms. Goines. Next we have the approval of minutes from regular meeting, January 28th, 2018. Do I have a motion?
It's been moved, Mr. Chair.
It's been moved and properly seconded. All in favor? It's been moved and properly seconded. Approved seven to zero. Next, no public presentations. Next, first public comment session. Ms. Davis.
We have one speaker tonight, Mr. Randy Bright, speaking on H-2O Sewer.
Randy Bright, District One, Fairfield County, Ridgeway. We have a consensus. That's right, a consensus. And we have a county council that's finally going to go ahead and move with that consensus and get the deal done. Going back through the plethora of strategic plans, strategic studies, and overall comprehensive plans over, well, basically this century, all of them, all of them, including the COGS for Fairfield County, the COGS Plan for Fairfield County, lists water and sewer as an imperative for this county to properly grow. There's no if-and's about it. There's no mystery. Plan after plan after plan, water sewer, water sewer. Other things are in there too. But the water sewer infrastructure is, is an imperative, as we know. And there's even one, I believe that was the one from 2010, and others alluded to it, talk about setting up an aside for development of water and sewer, understanding that it's not a inexpensive venture. And you guys are on the threshold, but need to get going, on that set aside program to ensure that we are able to afford the water and sewer plan. And of course, that would be the penny sales tax. Remember, and I've said this before, if we had started this five years ago, we would already have, based upon current figures from the penny sales tax, $10 million that we could put forward to water sewer, to bring families, homes, industry, new jobs, growing economy. It's an investment that everybody advises us to do, and you guys are on the threshold of making history, of getting the ball rolling and making it happen. Actually, you've already got the ball rolling, and I guess this started last year and continued with this year, with the Water Sewer Coordination Committee, which was also highly recommended in several of our strategic plans. So you're listening and you're taking action. Now let's bring it home with get going on the penny sales tax. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bright.
That concludes segment one.
Next is public hearings. We have none. Now down to ordinance resolutions and orders. Ms. Davis.
Third and final reading, ordinance number 716, and ordinance to amend the Fairfield County Land Management Ordinance, ordinance number 599, to provide for the zoning reclassification from B-2 General Business District to RD-1 Rural Residential District of 2.18 acres, owned by Jerry Murphy Jr. This is a portion of Tax Map Number 1850202005000, tract A. Property is located at approximately 6,700 East Peach Road, Ridgeway, South Carolina, 29130.
Thank you, Ms. Davis. Do we have a motion? It's been moved and properly seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? It's been motion seven to zero for approval. Now down to item B, resolution number 2019-1. Ms. Davis.
A resolution approving the final composition of the Commission of the Fairfield Joint Water and Sewer System, appointing Fairfield County's representatives on the commission of the joint system, approving the initial bylaws of the commission at the joint system, and other matters related thereto.
Do I have a motion? It's been moved and properly seconded. Any discussion? No discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? Approved seven to zero. Resolution number 2019-1. Item C, resolution number 2019-03. Ms. Davis.
A resolution of appreciation and recognition to the Fairfield Memorial Hospital Board of Trustees.
Do I have a motion? It's been moved and properly seconded. Instead of discussion, I'd like to have those members come up and be recognized, if I, if I may. I think I got it right here, don't I? We have Ms. Catherine Fantry, if you would come to the front. Mr. Randy Bright, Mr. James McGraw, Mr. Ron Smith, Ms. Antoinette Milton, Ms. Yolanda Settles, and Dr. Roger Gaddy. Thank you. Now we're down to board and commission minutes. Item A is from behavioral health, is just received as information only. Does any council member have any questions in reference to? If not, we're going down to board and commission appointments. As you already heard, Mr., by passage of resolution 2019-1, Mr. Craigor was actually appointed, no additional vote is needed, but I'll defer to Mr. Morgan to verify that if possible.
That is correct. Mr. Chairman, members of council, the appointment of Kyle Craigor to the Fairfield County, the Fairfield Joint Water and Sewer District, that was taken care of in the passage of the resolution. The resolution was the, basically, the enabling legislation for that commission, which approved both the bylaws and put, placed the initial members onto the board. Going forward, the one person, there's a five-member board, the one person, such as Mr. Craigor, has a four-year term. Any future appointments would be taken up during this time as any other normal board or appointment commission. But since this was the very first time, that's the reason why it was taken care of via the resolution.
Is Mr. Craigor here? Okay, we'll move over. Next is Disabilities and Special Needs Board. Ms. Rebecca P. Swearingen has been appointed from District Seven. Do I have a motion? It's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor? Any opposed? It's been voted seven to zero to approve Ms. Swearingen. Is Ms. Swearingen in the audience today? No. All right, now down to Behavioral Health. Ms. Jennifer Robinson, District Five. Do I have a motion?
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded to vote Ms. Jennifer Robinson to the Behavioral Health Board. Is Ms. Robinson in the audience? If she is, just stand to acknowledge her. Thank you. Old business, none; new business, none. I'm sorry, new business, the approval for portrait of Dr. J.B. Floyd to hang in the J.B. Floyd Building. Do I have a motion? It's been moved and properly seconded. Any discussion? If I could, get Mr. Taylor to just give us a little explanation.
There were a number of portraits that were in the old hospital, and we are trying to find an appropriate home for those portraits. They're very nice paintings that were done of the previous people who had been head of the hospital or had been involved with the hospital, physicians, they are directors. And this is, we think, the appropriate place for this particular portrait to go. We did ask the families, we've tried to encourage the families, if you would like these portraits, please come get them. They, they said that they did not, so we think it's the appropriate place to put it.
Thank you, Ms. Taylor. Yes, sir, go ahead. Okay. Are all the CEOs' pictures hanging up at the hospital?
I don't think so. I think that portraits were done in the past of specific people, and I don't think one's been done recently. There's been photographs taken, and there were a number of photographs hanging on the wall. I don't know all of the history. I can find that out for you and get it, but it's mostly older portraits. They look to be from the 50s and 60s.
Okay. All right, thank you. Ms. Bell, if I'm not mistaken, I think it was doctors, not, not CEOs, correct?
That, that's probably correct.
Do I have a motion? It's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor? Any opposed? It's been approved seven to zero. Now down to the county administrators' report. Mr. Taylor.
Yes, the first item I have tonight. We have been inviting our department heads, and we've got one that we haven't had before, Mr. Jeffrey Sanders. He's our Fairfield County DSS Director. We had a meeting the other day, and I asked him if he'd be willing to come and talk about what they do at DSS. We talk a lot about hard infrastructure, water and sewer, but that soft infrastructure, that social safety net that they provide to some of our, some of our most vulnerable citizens, our children, is very important. So I asked him if he would come and speak to council and answer, or ask any, or answer any questions you all might wish to ask him. Mr. Sanders, if you'd...
Hello, everybody. Thank you, County Council and Mr. Taylor, for allowing me the invitation to speak with you guys tonight. My name is Jeff Sanders. I'm the Fairfield County Director here in Fairfield County. I've been here since mid-November. Been with the agency about 20 years. I'm here tonight to go over a broad array of services that a department provides to the county, to the families of Fairfield County. Our mission at DSS is to promote safety, permanency, and well-being of children and vulnerable adults by helping those individuals achieve stability and strengthening those families. The Department of Social Services divided into two major divisions, our Economic Services Division and our Human Services Division. The Economic Services Division consists of SNAP and TANF services. SNAP, the SNAP program is what we call the Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program, or some of you may know it as food stamps. That is a program that is income-based. It's designed to promote the general welfare and health of the nation's low-income population. These families receive a monthly dollar amount based on the household income that they have and the number of people in the home, and that is used to purchase food for the family. Approximately 2,300 household members in Fairfield County receive SNAP benefits. The TANF program stands for Temporary Assistance for Needy Families. This is also an income-based program. The goal of the TANF program is to reform the welfare system so that disadvantaged individuals can be prepared for employment and find jobs. TANF case managers assist those individuals with maximizing their strengths and abilities in order for families in poverty to become more socially and economically independent. There are approximately 50 families in Fairfield that receive TANF benefits. And then, of course, there's the Human Services Division, which some of you know is Child Protective Services and Adult Protective Services. Adult Protective Services ensures for the safety and well-being of adults 18 years of age and up who are considered to be a vulnerable adult. Vulnerable adults are any adult who cannot provide for their own self-care and protection, to include their daily living skills. Your age alone does not make you a vulnerable adult. You can be 90 years old and in your right mind and make your own decisions, and you are not a vulnerable adult. The goal of APS is to ensure that vulnerable adults has the support services in their home to ensure for their own care and protection. We currently have approximately 20 cases in Fairfield County with vulnerable adults. And of course, there's Child Protective Services, and it ensures for the safety and well-being of children from 26 weeks of gestation until 18 years of age. This overall goal with CPS is to ensure that children are safe and to provide services to maintain a family unit when we can. Case managers with Child Protective Services investigate allegations of abuse and neglect, ranging from physical neglect, physical abuse, medical neglect, and sexual abuse. Our case managers make a decision based off the South Carolina Code of Law and child welfare policy to determine what course of action to take with each family. When abuse and neglect has been determined, case managers either work with the children in the home or make provisions for those children to be cared for out of the home. Our Human Services Division works closely with community partners such as local law enforcement, local mental health, Department of Disabilities and Special Needs, and alcohol and drug treatment providers to ensure that families are given opportunities to care for their children and loved ones and keep them safe. We currently have approximately 60 families in Fairfield that have identified abuse and neglect cases currently. There are times when children are placed in foster care, and currently Fairfield County has 23 children in the foster care system. Some of these children have a plan to return home, some do not. Some have plans to be given to relatives through legal custody, and some have plans to be adopted. South Carolina DSS strives to keep families together when we can, when it's safe. It is a stressful job, but it's also rewarding. The success stories are what you do not hear about in the news, the good things that we do for the families, teaching families to learn new skills, to change their behavior so that they don't have us in their lives anymore. The stories of children who were removed from a violent home or who severely, who were severely sexually abused by a parent and removed from that home and now placed in a loving, with a loving family. Those are the stories that you don't hear about, the numerous good things. One of the biggest needs of our agency is more community resources and more foster parents. Currently, we have three foster homes in Fairfield County, which means 20 of the children that are Fairfield children don't live in their own county. They live in counties all over the state. It takes a very special person to foster a child, but rewards are tenfold. I encourage members of the community to reach out, and if you find it in your heart to foster, please contact me or a member of our agency for any additional information that you have. I thank you for allowing me the time to speak, and if there's anything that me or my staff can do for anybody in the community, please don't hesitate to contact me. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sanders. Any council member?
Yes. And I guess this question is to you, Mr. Taylor. Is there, is there any way that when we have county heads, agency heads come to us, that they probably can have a little brochure that might be able to talk about what their mission statement is, what kind of services they provide, again, to list the services, how to get access to the services, and what are the qualifications for the services? So we can take that little brochure and maybe pass it out to the constituents in the communities? Could we, could we do that?
We could do that. That does sound like a very good idea. We have had some agency heads do that, but that would be good to be consistent so people could follow up with what they hear here and have contact information.
Any other council member has a question for Ms. Sanders?
Question, but want to thank you so very much for the service that you render to the citizens of Fairfield County, as well as your connection with the state of South Carolina. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sanders.
Next, I have Mr. Brad Hoffman, who wants to give a presentation to council. He is with the Fairfield County Farmers Market Association. Farmers, I don't know if that's the full title, but wants to, we've been working with them to try to expand a place for them to, to sell their, their produce. He wants to give you an update on that.
Evening, council. My name's Brad Hoffman. I'm co-manager of the Fairfield Farmers and Artisan Market. I would like to take this opportunity on behalf of myself and the also co-manager Valerie Clowney, and the farmers and the vendors for giving us this opportunity to be in this new building. We need to give special thanks to several, several people. Billy Smith, Neil Robertson, Jimmy Ray Douglas, Ms. Goines, and of course, our county administrator, Jason Taylor, has made this thing possible for us. The bifocals don't work so good anymore. So we're looking forward to this next year being in the old stable. I mean, this is a great, great building. The outcome of us being in last year has tenfolded our customer base. I just don't know how much thanks to give you all for giving us the opportunity to run with this. Keith Branham and Timmy Matters and the other craftsmen that have been restoring this building are doing a phenomenal job. The comments have been unbelievable every time people walk into that building of how great this is going to be for Fairfield County and for the town of Windsboro. This wouldn't have started if it wasn't for Terry Vickers many, many years ago, the driving force to get a farmer's market downtown, and the many others that helped her along the way to make this happen. We feel that the farmer's market is an important role in a community to serve, to give people that need means to get good vegetables, produce, and other stuff. The vision of the farmer's market is to make this a gathering location every Saturday between nine and one and draw people from out of town to come down and to shop at our local stores and the farmer's market. And we hope that we could double our numbers again this year with a little bit more effort. Facebook page has been good, but we need the people to get the word out and invite their families, friends from other communities. In the past year, last year, we did a local food drive for the local food bank during the holiday market. We also did for the local foster children. We gathered a bunch of stuff from our patrons that came in to buy vegetables and so on and so forth. So last year, we took the market on the road and went to Lake Monticello Family Practice and had a farmer's market out there and had a pretty good turnout. Most of the vendors were quite happy to do that. We also were invited to Mount Zion in October for Breast Cancer Awareness Walk. All the vendors pitched in, and we gave a pretty nice little donation to the breast cancer. So, and then the big thing this year was, is in November, we had the scavenger hunt, where we went with all the merchants downtown, and we're fortunate that somebody came up with an Element TV to donate to the winning person that had all the stamps. That was a big fun time for all that was in that, in the scavenger hunt. We're exciting, we're excited about 2019. We've been invited to go to Arts on the Ridge, May 4th, and that will be the first farmer's market in Ridgeway. The grand opening date is May 18th, and we're going to have a ribbon-cutting ceremony. I've already got a couple of people coming. I'm going to invite the rest of you all to be there that Saturday morning. Chances are, we'll have Channel 10, Channel 19 doing clips on this to draw people to Fairfield, to Windsboro, to see what is going on. Again, thanks for the opportunity. You, you just don't know what this means to the farmers, to the people that go to this market every Saturday. They love that building. And if there's any questions, I'll be glad to take them.
I think one of the reasons too that the farmer's market would really be a good thing is because it'll bring people downtown to shop also.
And, and that's our biggest thing, is to work with everybody downtown, all the merchants.
That time is when?
It's Saturday. Every Saturday, it starts on, what did I say, May 18th? May 18th, and it goes nine to one. And what we want to do is draw out-of-town people and get them to stay in Windsboro. I hear we got a couple of restaurants starting here shortly downtown, and we want this to be an attraction, that we keep people downtown, especially with the museum and stuff like that. I mean, that's what we need to get the downtown to look back at 1960, when you see the DOT pictures with cars on both sides of the road on a Saturday morning, Saturday afternoon, that we make that happen.
Mr. Bill.
The building, Mr. Taylor, is a really nice building. I tell you what, and all that work that has gone on at that building is just really represent a really good job. And when I was talking to the people there, they were saying that it might be, be able to use some other activities during the week or something like that. If it is, talk about that piece, because I think the county need to know, because that's a good deal.
It is. This was a building that the county owned, and as he said, Ms. Terry Vickers, for a long time, had been pushing to try to have the building used for something, and she had some ideas. And Walmart had donated $30,000 to downtown redevelopment. It was sitting in an account for a long time going unused. And finally, Ms. Vickers got together with me, and she said, can we use that $30,000 to start redoing that building, to make it useful for, to the public? It's sitting there, not being used at all. It wasn't functional as it was laid out because it had a lot of little offices in it. So we took our crews, and we went in and said, let's, let's assess the building and see what we got. And we gutted the building out and took it back down to its original shell, which was an old stable. It really looked nice. So we took the $30,000, and we've done some work on the building as far as getting it to where it is now, and we've used our crews, our labor. Keith Branham and his crews have done a wonderful job with it. But we could even expand, as you said, and possibly turn it into something where we could put a commercial kitchen in it, and then it could be used for events also. We could use it for event rental, to, again, bring people downtown, because that's how you grow your downtown. You have to have traffic, and you got to get people down there. So we're looking at a USDA grant, which is roughly another $100,000, to put a commercial kitchen in it, and that would also benefit the farmers, because they could come and they could do kind of value-added processes to their products, whether it's canning or they would have commercial refrigeration there. So again, we can expand what they can do, and we can use it for other events. We've also put in a small meeting room. We have space to do that, so it can be used for meetings, classrooms, those kind of things too. Oh, the location. You know, I don't know the exact address, but it's behind...
117.
Okay, behind the town clock, to the side of it. A lot of people know it is, the old voter registration had been there, the morgue had been there, I think, I don't know if a skating rink had been there. It's been a lot of things.
Bowling alley at one time, we've been told. So, I mean, I appreciate you guys giving us a chance to run with this and help build this community. The farmers are just ecstatic to have a building that they can actually come into every Saturday and set up. And there's some talk that the first Fridays, when the merchants are open, once market season starts, that we will be open Friday night to help draw more people in and give the opportunities to people that don't have Saturday morning to come get their vegetables, their eggs, their meat, honey, you know, everything else. And look at the artisans that are in our facility there now, your facility, and I mean, it's just going to be one. It's awesome. It's just absolutely awesome.
Thank you, Mr. Hoffman. I don't have a, a question, but I just have a couple of comments. I thank Mr. Taylor, Ms. Vickers, and everyone before me for having a vision to even go into an avenue like this, because it is going to be a nice, if you haven't been, please go see it. I can just imagine us having a retreat there or having a birthday party or similar to the farm in Ridgeway. Speaking on a project I've been trying to work with last year and a half is the Walkable Windsboro Project. We were discussing having the accessibility to be able to walk and get fruits and vegetables, and that's just prime location. So all of this, all of these things kind of tie in together. It's just putting the pieces together now. That's all, that's all we're doing. So I, I thank you guys for what you do, and I'm looking forward to a better, I'm not sure exactly what we're going to call it, maybe the market? I'm looking forward toward a better market.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Anything we could do, I mean, art... Anything we can do, I mean, my numbers anywhere, you know, please do give me a call. We hope that you're all there for the ribbon-cutting. I'm pretty sure that Hugh Weathers is going to be there, and that would be pretty high on the priority list if he's there. There'll be some other people there for the ribbon-cutting, and I think that we got the TV stations on board to come do a blurb about it and then post it at a later time.
Thank you, Mr. Hoffman.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is the Clerk to Council's report. Ms. Davis.
Mr. Chairman, council members, you have before you the Board and Commission Vacancies Report for February 2019. This is an overall view of the vacancies that exist. You also have before you the Vacancies Report for your specific district and the updated needs by district, which has been placed on the bulletin board as you enter the building downstairs. If you have any questions or would like to go over any of the information, just let me know.
Thank you, Ms. Davis. Now's time for a second public comment session. Ms. Davis.
We have two to speak tonight. First, Ms. Jackie Workman, speaking on visions.
Well, I do notice that you have a new podium, so let me hear it. Don't start, Mr. Anderson. Good evening, Chairman Robertson, Vice Chair Goines, and council members. As council is preparing to plan and strategize, we're asking you to be proactive and decisive in your thinking as you work towards at least three to five long-range achievable goals for 2019 and three to five short-range goals. In your planning, the community is respectfully requesting that you include, A, your support for the Teachers Village, which will attract, recruit, and retain teachers, and other professionals may provide a place to live for them where they work and bring stability to our community. B, after several community meetings, the citizens are making the following requests regarding the proposed site adjacent to Martin Blue Moon. A monument be placed on the site instead of purchased bricks with the following names engraved: Booker T. Martin, Henry Yarborough, Zenobia Dixon, Maxwell Whitting, and Reverend Thomas Feaster. C, the pennies sale tax with the funds designated for sewer. D, the multi-purpose half courts extended to four courts, and a full-court, multi-purpose center for the Ridgeway community. E, a rail and a pier built on Coltrussa Road near Schaefer Ridge. F, what is the status on the Federal Regulatory Commission regarding the 8.12 acres of land in the Dawkins Community? And this was a request made last year, so I know you all know. Have FARC specified any conditions? Now, you can answer that if you want to, because I know you know. But I just want to thank council. You all have been appearing to work together, which is good. You're representing our community, and I hope you do hear the request that the community is making, not that you decide for the community, but listen. Have open ears and an open heart to what the community is saying. The heartbeat of the community, one sound, one band, that's what you all represent. One sound, togetherness. And then, we've got Mr. Taylor and Mr. Anderson. Amen? Well, you ain't got to say amen, I don't care. But anyway, amen.
Thank you, Ms. Work.
Next, Mr. Randy Bright, speaking on not going down the drain.
Randy Bright, District 1, Ridgway, Fairfield County. This isn't a follow-up to the water sewer thing with my title, but it could be. I want to just convey a couple of impressions that I've seen here, and this has been going on for the last couple of years, just an improved openness on the county council's side, listening to people, no matter who they are. And actually, what's most important, actually giving the conveyance some thoughts, and we've seen a couple of times tonight where people have made suggestions, and then you guys have started spitballing with that suggestions. Hey, a good idea, maybe we can even make it better. This is a symbol of trying to do things better, modernizing the county, making things better. The speakers tonight, excellent speakers, two excellent speakers tonight that are in charge of important and integral parts of our county, and they seem to be open, asking questions, what can we do to help you? And one example of that might be, and maybe we're doing this, I don't know, I had some discussions with this before, is an example of taking that idea of a great farmer's market, how can we make that even better? Can we put a sign on 77 Fairfield County, home of weekend farmer's markets? Or can we work with the NGOs and the state agencies to booster the farmer's markets? And I'm sure many of you are aware, I know a couple of you are, that there are several programs out there within the state, and it's also some federal funding, that provide more bang-for-the-buck for those with SNAP cards with fresh vegetables. One example is, there's a program, there's two programs, main programs out there. One is that you, with a SNAP card, you can get, use $5 off your SNAP card and get $20 worth of fruits and vegetables. There's another one, $10, get $20 worth of fruits and vegetables. This would be a great benefit to our citizens, a great benefit to farmer's market, draw more people into the county, and just a win-win for everybody if the county could help coordinate that. I know the Council of Aging is, kind of works with that, but I'm sure they could use some additional help and manpower and thought power behind that. And there's a lot of other things that we can do also as far as communication, and that was brought up a couple of times in some of the speakers' talks, is communication. How can we get the word out about all these great programs? And one way to do that would be leverage the county's digital presence via Facebook and the website about letting these agencies, and there is some to it, but letting these agencies post their events, post their services on your website. Let's get that out there, because every time that post happens, you can share it and more people learn it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bright.
That concludes segment two.
Now, it's down to county council time. Any council member would like to be recognized? Ms. Douglas.
Well, the good news is Duke Energy is going to spend some money in Fairfield County. They're looking at three different sites on Lake Waterie to put parks, and it won't cost the county a penny, they're going to do all the work themselves. They have people in and out, getting surveyors and stuff in off of Molly Creek, and they should maybe start in the fourth quarter of this year working on that. And if this goes good, and we find people to run these different parts of the park, they're looking at Colonel Creek and Tyler's Landing, too.
I was looking forward to your other presentation you said you was going to have last week, last goer.
Forgot about that. As soon as the attorney, county attorney lets me know about my idea about raising some more funds, I'll let you know. Right now, I can tell you what it's all about. I have land that I'm paying ag taxes on, and that's hardly nothing. Everybody else that owns less than five acres are paying a lot more taxes. I feel like every acre in Fairfield County needs to have an extra dollar taxes on it, and that'll raise $454,000 a year toward the sewer and water problem we're having in Fairfield County. If it's legal to do, I'll probably let you know next time.
Thank you, Ms. Douglas. Any other council member? Vice Chair Goines.
Yes, Mr. Chair, thank you so much, and please let me know if it's legal to do. Okay, I'm with you. Good evening. I just want to say I am grateful and thankful I had the opportunity to attend the Isaac Woodard Memorial Ceremony in Batesburg-Leezville on Saturday, and it was just truly amazing. I do not have the words to express, unless she was actually present, I do not have words to express how awesome it was, and I do have, briefly, I do have a list of a few people that were present at that event, and it was just, it was just amazing. Mayor Lancer Shul, Town of Batesburg-Leezville, Reverend Charles Simpkins, Mayor Protem, Town Council, Batesburg-Leezville, Orange-Wilkinson High School, Air Force Junior ROTC Color Guard, they were amazing. Judge Richard M. Gergel, U.S. District Judge Charleston, Brigadier General Milford H. Beagle, Commanding General, U.S. Army Training Center and Docking Command, Mr. Donald Day, National President of Disabled Veterans, Dr. Andrew Myers, University of South Carolina Upstate, Mr. Don North, the Sergeant Isaac Woodard Jr., Historical Association, Dr. Addie Duncan, Associate Professor of English, Frostberry State University, James Gallman, South Carolina NAACP, Mr. Nelson Govan, Representative of South Carolina Governor Henry McMaster, Mr. Darnell Fennel, Museum Director, County of Lexington, South Carolina, of course, myself, and Oliver Smith, Chaplain, South Carolina Veterans of Foreign Wars, Mr. Bobby Donaldson, Director, Center for Civil Rights History and Research, University of South Carolina, and an amazing young lady, Ms. Angela Easterland, a recording artist from Charleston, and she wrote a song called "Isaac Woodard Eyes," and she composed this song five years ago when they were just beginning to do the research on this event. And I don't want to take too much time, but the proclamation, I want to thank Clerk to Council Patty Davis, the proclamation she did from Fairfield County was just beautiful, and I thank you so much for that, and also, if you would like to get a copy of it, then it will give you kind of a total highlight of the incident, it was so devastating, but it changed and affected us even today. And in that, I had the opportunity to also make some remarks, and I'm not going to do anything away from home that I wouldn't do at home. And so, I want to just share my remarks with you that I made, and it's very brief. It says, "I'm humbled and grateful and in awe to know that on March 18, 1919, Sergeant Woodard was born in Fairfield County, and on March 21, 1919, my mother was born in Fairfield County. Not just that, in July 1948, God used Sergeant Isaac Woodard Jr. as a living sacrifice and President Harry S. Truman as a voice to invoke a cry for change in the race of humanity he..."